Okay. It's 7:04. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Selectment, January 5th, 2016, even though my notes say 15. Order. And first order of business, because Emily Ennis has to get down to her planning board meeting, so we'll skip to item six and discuss the planning board articles. Hi, Emily.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you very much for having me, and thank you also for your flexibility. Tom and I were joking before the meeting about trying to clone ourselves, so since that won't work, yes, exactly. I wanted to give you an update on one of the articles that, the zoning articles for the February special town meeting. There are two that the planning board are putting forward, and one is a citizens petition. And next week, I'm going to come to you with the planning board's recommendations on all three, because that's the public hearing we're having tonight. But some stuff happened at the last planning board meeting that involves you guys, or was going to involve you guys, and so I wanted to make sure that you knew what it was, and that the situation's been clarified and fixed, but just so there's no rumors going around as to who said what. So when we submitted the article to you, the planning board had voted it, and then the morning you guys were going to be voting on it, I met with town council on something else, and he had ruled one of the paragraphs in our proposed article that it was not in violation of state law, but inconsistent with state law. So I took it out before submitting it to you, hoping that the planning board members would ratify that. And they didn't. They actually asked me to ask you to reopen the warrant, to put it back in. There was some discussion back and forth, and unfortunately, I didn't have a written document from town council at the time. And so this was your next meeting after that meeting. In the meantime, I asked town council to have a look at it, and he came back and revised his opinion, saying that it was good to go in, but also that it was within the scope of the article, so that I did not need to ask you to reopen the article. So I would expect, given the planning board's vote at the last meeting, that we'd be adding that paragraph in tonight in our recommendation, and submitting that recommendation to the warrant committee for their consideration for the recommendation. But I just wanted to give you an update, because sometimes something happens at one board's meeting that involves another board, and the other board never actually hears what happens.
So is the ZBA being the enforcing?
This would be, yes. And so I should say what it is. We had wanted the board, or wanted to clarify that the Board of Appeals would be the board for appeals to the special permit under Section 3N. Were originally told that we couldn't do it. Now we can. The difference is between, as I understand it, between a permit granting authority versus a special permit granting authority in the state legislation. And I believe you should all have a copy of the letter from, or the email from town council.
Yes.
Right.
Great.
So that's it, and I'm looking forward to seeing you next week on the 12th.
Perfect.
Good luck again. Good luck with the public hearing tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Skip back up. So let's see, review and approval of minutes, there are no minutes to approve tonight. Confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have January 12th, 19th, and the 26th, which is fine with me.
Fine with me as well.
Yes.
Okay. Item four is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item five is citizens speak. Any, come on up, Becky.
Hello. Vicki McCarthy, Six Hill Crest Road. I wasn't going to speak at citizens speak. As I said earlier to Tom, I'm actually here just as a watchdog for the Milton Women's Club donations further on. But I thought it would be a good opportunity to support the chair, Tom Hurley, and our town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan. And it's on the police chief search committee situation that had been brought up a number of weeks ago. And I just wanted to say how I support you as the chairman, and what you said, and Anne Marie Fagan as the town administrator, and what she contributed that night. And I know there's been a lot of discussion, and I know there's been a lot of social media kinds of things. And I just want to say that I think for the integrity of the process, I hope that you prevail in what you presented.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thanks. Okay. No other citizens. Okay. Item seven on the agenda is discussion of the town administrative search process. And Anne Marie, do you want to just briefly discuss it? Yeah, because you were involved, obviously, in.
Yes. I'd be happy to. I put in your packet the information and the paperwork from the last search done in 2012 for the town administrator. And what is in your packet is the screening committee that was established. It was a five-member committee. The screening committee charge, which really isn't a charge, it's just kind of outlining the process and the timeline. The ad that went into the papers, into the MMA, into the ICMA, and all of the papers. I put in the law on the town administrator, the Section 23A, which deals with appointing a town administrator. The next page, it was the qualities and the characteristics that the then Board of Selectmen and the committee were looking for in their new town administrator. So I thought that would be helpful for you in crafting what your qualities and characteristics are for your new town administrator. And then last was a job description, a draft job description that was crafted back in 2012. It was just a draft job description, so it, obviously, now with this special, the strong town administrator legislation, which outlines the duties of the new town administrator, that would be incorporated as your job description.
And that was drafted by the town government study committee at the time.
Yes.
But it was not used, as I understand it.
It was not, because it went too far.
It went beyond.
It went beyond the powers that the town administrator had at the time.
That's correct.
Yeah. I guess my only concern in timing is still waiting for the, do we start this process before we actually have the home petition back in hand?
I think we should.
I certainly think we should.
I think we probably do. I mean, the only risk is, for whatever reason, it doesn't come back.
But I think the intention, though, is that it is going to go to this strong former government.
I can't see how it wouldn't.
Yeah. And so at some point in time, we're actually still working forward, giving ourselves a little bit more time.
So do we then advertise it as a strong town administrator?
I believe so.
Yeah. I think we have to work on what the ad will say.
Say, yeah.
I did read these materials from 2012 and thought that they're a good starting point for us, but there's probably things that we need to change because of the pending legislation, but that we may also just want to change. And also the makeup of the committee. This was a five-member committee three years ago. I would not be opposed to a larger committee, given that this is an important, this is a very important decision for this board, and we are going to a town administrator that's stronger than what the town has had in the past, so it's a bit of a new, it's a new change for us.
Yeah. I wouldn't be opposed to, say, a seven-member committee involving, you know, potentially one or two strong town administrators from the outside in the search process, or, not the search process, but the screening process.
Yeah. And that's what we had last, we had one last time.
Had one.
I'm not hugely in favor of big committees, just because they get unwieldy, but I hear what you're saying. And certainly, seven's not enormous.
No.
No. It would potentially allow each of us to appoint two people to it. I think that's what you did last time.
Every, each appointed a person, yeah.
It should be designated one person. And then there was a representative from the government study committee and the outside town administrator, who happened to be a resident of the town. That's, I think that's ideal if we have someone who also has a vested interest in Milton, as well as experience as a town administrator. I'm not sure we'll be able to find that.
Probably not, yeah. Yeah. So I guess the next step is we should get this back on an agenda to kind of move this forward in our, well, the meeting on the 12th is going to be a tough one, but maybe on the?
The 19th.
The 19th.
Do we want to have any discussion of what qualities we think, you know, initially, and maybe on the 19th, our ideas will be more firmed up, but I, what qualities we're looking for, what level of experience we're looking for?
I don't think it's much different, actually, or in my mind, than what was here before. You know, somebody with a, where the heck was it? I lost it now. Somebody with a bachelor's degree. And rather than an advanced degree preferable, I would think, and I would either want an advanced degree or equivalent as a mandatory. So equivalent could be years of experience, I guess.
I think we should take a little time ourselves prior to that next meeting and come up with some ideas. I mean, I've done a lot of work hiring in my past jobs, and I'd like to take a look to it, some other towns, you know, in, you know, recently hiring strong town administrators, and take a look at what their job descriptions were as well. It never hurts. It's not reinventing the wheel.
Right. Right.
It doesn't. I remember, you know, this job description says, including 10 years of municipal administration experience, preferably at the management level, some management experience in private enterprise. I'm not so sure whether 10 years is the right number or not, whether it should be preferred versus mandatory. The more you make mandatory.
The more difficult it is.
The more difficult it becomes. So I like the preferred language rather than required, other than maybe a bachelor's degree.
And some could be substituted.
Yeah. I agree with that.
But I think we should also talk about, you know, what we're going to be looking for in appointing the screening committee as well. You know, I, for one, think that we need to, we need to look at people who have had some experience, either at the state municipal level, who have worked with municipal heads, if we have them, you know, because I think that they'll bring some experience, you know, long-term, in terms of what we're looking for, because I think that this is a position, this is a really big hire, I think, for us. I think that this is.
Yeah. You want the right person.
We want the right person. I think so. You know, we should, we should take our time in making sure that we select some of these, some of these candidates.
Yeah. I mean, I think what's going to happen is, you know, we're going to put the ad out there. We will get a fair response, I think.
Yeah.
And we're going to get, I mean, it tends to be, you know, you'll get, there's a pack of town administrators, ex-town administrators, and town managers out there that will apply.
Right.
So.
Well, and I guess one question for us, not that we have to answer it tonight, is are we looking specifically for someone who has town administrator or town manager experience? Is it, do you want that? Is it, you know, that that's a requirement, or is that preferable?
Well, the skill set obviously has to be good managerial experience. I mean, you have to know how to manage people and things. People and projects, yeah. And so clearly, you need that. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to be a town manager, but you need that skill set. You need to know how governments work. I mean, that's, I think, mandatory.
Yeah. I think operationally, they need to know how to function within the municipal environment.
Right.
I think that's a, that's a big deal. I think Wellesley, at one point, hired, you know, for their town manager, someone from the business side, from the private sector. And I'm not sure whether it worked out or not, and that's great. And we could, we could go that direction. But they have to be familiar, I think, with, you know, municipal budgeting, how government works, you know.
Right.
Unions, leadership within. It's a whole different beast.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's always good to have someone who has experience on both ends, but that isn't always entirely possible. So I think we should be open, though, you know, to any, any type of candidate. But I think, though, having some strong experience in leading, you know, a government entity or a town or municipal or a city should be preference.
I agree with that.
And I think I'd be looking for somebody that has some innovative thoughts, as opposed to the, just the old tried and true.
Yeah. You know, there are people that have found efficiencies, you know, in other towns or municipalities. And it'd be good to see, you know, some people who can work outside the box and come up with new ideas.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah. Because I think that's clearly what we need.
Sure.
Okay.
So in terms of the size of the committee, do we want to take that up on the 19th and give that a little further thought?
I mean, if you two want seven, I'm fine with seven, but it's just a matter, again, of thinking who they're going to be.
I would think, well, I guess it depends on how are we going to constitute the seven. If we're each going to appoint two people, and then maybe have a town administrator, if we can find one from another community, that may work.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. And I can see what's going to happen. We're all going to come up with the same two.
No, I don't think so. I think we've got a pretty, pretty broad, I think we have a pretty.
Yeah. And as I mentioned, you know, we can have, we can have, for this committee charge, we can have, you know, another discussion on the 19th about what we're looking for, you know. We don't have to have, you know, someone with state and municipal experience, someone with HR experience, you know, across the board. I mean, it'd be nice to have someone who's spent a lot of time working here in the town, you know, on several committees, and understands, you know, how we operate. Those are good things, so.
I think we want a committee that's reflective of the town, but also has enough back, enough experience or background in some of the areas that we're looking for, for the administrator.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Well, should we all take a stab, maybe, at any changes we'd want to make to the job description?
And have it ready for the 19th?
Come up with some ideas for the committee, and discuss it further on the 19th.
Sure. That's fine.
Sounds good.
I guess one question might also be, what role should the current town administrator have in the process? Would the town administrator be available to assist the committee as needed, attend some of their meetings? I guess depending on whether the screening committee felt the need for assistance, or whether we might. But I think that's something for us to think about, too.
Yeah. You could even go as far as to allow the town administrator to be one of the.
Yeah. I think we should. You know, I think Anne Marie's experience is invaluable on this, so I mean, I'll leave it up, I think, you know, to Anne Marie, whether she wants to be a part of the process. That's what I would say, because I think that, you know, you live that job every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think she should be a part of the process. I wonder if it's to be there to answer questions for the committee, or to advise the committee, rather than being.
I don't know.
I don't know. Something for us to think about.
Yes.
Something to think about. Sure. The item eight on the agenda is discussion of the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency Property and Casualty Election, Group Elections, which is, that's MYO, and we've got the MMA Annual Meeting coming up January 23rd. And there will be elections for the Board of MYO, which is the insurance arm of, and usually what, this falls on the chair.
Chair.
Right.
Yes.
And it looks like.
Those it needs.
It looks like unless we want to nominate somebody other than the people here, that there's no, there's no contest. It's all, there's three open seats and three people.
Three people.
Nominated, but.
So I'll move the way of saying Jay Thomas Hurley is the board's voting delegate for the election of directors for the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association Property and Casualty Group.
I'll second that.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item nine on the agenda is approval of a one-day liquor license for the Milton Arts Center.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for a fundraiser to be held on February 6th, 2016, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Milton Arts Center at 334 Edge Hill Road.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. I just have one question. Have we been keeping, it's only because Milton Arts has had a bunch of one-day liquors.
Yes, we have been keeping track of the number. Yes. Mr. Chairman.
All right. So motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item 10, I think we're waiting for some.
Yes, we are. Mr. Chairman, waiting for the attorney, Mary McGetrick.
Okay.
We didn't think we'd go this quickly.
We're flying.
Yes, you are. We gave her a target of about quarter of 8:00 to 8:00 o'clock, so we're going out to call her now.
Okay. Item 11 is the approval of the OPEB trustees.
Yes.
Before we put a motion on the table, I mentioned, Anne Marie, I don't think this is necessary. I think we've already appointed these trustees by operation of the trust agreement when we.
Probably have, because they're named by position, actually.
Exactly. It's by position, and they're all named in the trust agreement. By approving that, I don't think that we need, I think we've already done this. I'm not sure that we need to reappoint.
You want to do it just in case, or, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
The only thing is, there's no, you know, when the town administrator steps down, that, her role as a trustee automatically terminates.
Terminates and the new town administrator.
And then, and the same with the new assistant town administrator, who has not yet been hired. So that person will automatically step into it when, when they take the position.
Right. You wouldn't, you wouldn't think you'd have to appoint them again, yeah?
No. And that, and that's, there's only four being appointed under this proposed motion.
We could defer it and just bounce it off a town council, make sure, and then.
That's what I had asked we do, and I don't think we've had a chance to do.
We actually got the decision. It came in very late today, a little after 5:00. And I spoke with Attorney Fox at Murphy-Heston and Lehane, and he did agree with Katie that we do not have to appoint, because it is spelled out on.
Okay. That's fine.
Number five in the trust agreement.
Fine, all right. Okay. We'll skip.
So Tom, you're our, as the chair, you're our representative now on this.
Yes.
On this Board of Trustees. So I think it would be helpful, I would like at least maybe to have Anne Marie give us periodic updates, just as to where things are at.
Yeah.
Because there's a due diligence component that's going to need to be.
Right.
Undertaken here, and I would.
I suspect what's going to happen is, there's not going to, there's initially going to be a job for the trustees, and that's to appoint a fund manager, you know, whoever that may be. And that's going to be a process. Once that's done, I don't see, because we're not a fully funded trust, and we'll be having, there's not going to be an awful lot to do after that, once that.
Going forward.
That process is done.
Yeah. I agree with that. I just would like Anne Marie to just, you know, to update us, especially David and I, who are not.
I had mentioned.
Who are not trustees, to just keep us informed as to where the trustees are at in exercising their fiduciary duty and doing their due diligence, because that was a pretty big issue for me and for David at the, at one of the summer meetings, and wanting, I want to be sure that.
I had mentioned to Anne Marie, I had mentioned to Anne Marie that one of the things that the trustees might want to think about doing, because to try and choose a fund manager is a fairly technical thing, and, I mean, I know enough about it to be dangerous, but not beyond that, I don't know. To maybe, there are plenty of people in this town, one that comes to mind is Raj Pathik, to see if he's willing to either come on and help us through that process, just as a nice guy.
That's probably a good idea. I was thinking, too, that maybe even Brian Fox could even give some general advice to the trustees about just fiduciary duty and what your.
Right.
Duties are and your obligations are.
Beyond that, you know, what are you looking for?
That's something different.
Yeah.
But I think you could probably get advice from both.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good idea. Okay.
Okay. Item 12 on the agenda is acceptance of the Milton Women's Club donation. And so a few donations here, so.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll propose a motion to accept two grants from the Milton Women's Club, one in the amount of $9,000 for the Council on Aging and the Milton Police Department to be used as specified in this December 20th, 2015 award letter, and another in the amount of $2,200 for the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition to be used as specified in the December 29th, 2015 award letter.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just that it's very generous for the Milton Women's Club.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To you and the members.
So I did have a quick question. The, the police department grant is actually for a canine.
That's correct.
Dog?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have two now? Or?
I'm not sure if this will make two or three out.
We had two.
I'm retiring.
Okay. Is that what it is?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So it's to replace the one retired.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. Now I understand better.
And for the Council on Aging, you know, screen and a projector and a display case, which I'm sure they could.
Yeah, that's very nice.
That's great.
Make a lot of use from. So this is a very generous gift.
And there were other gifts, and I had a brief conversation earlier on. The school department, now does that have to come before the Board of Selectmen, because they give you.
I think that might make to the schools.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
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 And then we had the discussion about the library.
Why doesn't she come to the town?
And because the library is through the foundation, two different foundations, the Friends of the Milton Library.
Shouldn't it ever come to the town?
Oh, yeah. Vicki, why don't you, because nobody can hear you back there.
I just was curious, since some other monies were given to the town, but maybe because they're, for instance, the schools went directly, I guess, to the schools.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. And they can accept that.
They can accept it without going through the Board? Okay. Then the Friends of the Milton Library, can they?
That's a separate nonprofit, so yes.
Okay. So they can accept it. And then there's another, the Milton Library Foundation.
Yes.
It's also a nonprofit, isn't it?
It's a nonprofit.
They're both nonprofits. It's just interesting, because when I read the proposals, they mentioned town employees in them, so that's why I was kind of curious. But.
Yeah. Yeah. They're separate entities, so.
Okay. And then the other things, I think, I think it's interesting, and I don't know if you're interested, you probably saw in the paper that there were, there was money given to the Friends. There was money given to Home, Inc. Friends, there was money given to Home Inc. Now, are they a nonprofit? I didn't know that myself.
Home Inc. is a nonprofit, yes.
Oh, great, okay. One of the things that wasn't in the paper, but I think it's exciting, Maria Dross Counseling Services, which is in Quincy, but they offer services to Milton residents, and there's actually Milton residents on the board there. It's a wonderful organization, and so money was given to them, but it wasn't mentioned in the Milton Times, maybe because it's not a Milton-based organization.
Okay.
The Milton Arts Center received an award, which is wonderful. Milton Farmers Market, Milton Historical Society, Milton Players, that even though they're not here, they're in Canton and they're still called the Milton Players. You know, they perform it, you probably know the Milton Hospital School, so that's wonderful. And Milton Residence Fund, which is great. So, it's exciting, and actually the part of the $2,200 that you mentioned for the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, it's specifically to fund programs to be supervised by the Milton Board of Health, that's why it came to here, even though the Coalition is a coalition, but it's under the Board of Health, and so that's why that part came here. But I think it's exciting, so that the total grants as of 12/1/2015, $61,900.
Excellent, very, very good.
So, it's exciting.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, item 13 on the agenda is acceptance of a Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Milton donation.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation from the Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital in the amount of $7,500 for the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion, other than, thank you very much.
Just on that, tomorrow night is our Milton Substance Abuse Coalition meeting, and we're meeting at BID Milton, the Ed Gironi Center, and there'll be a presentation, Peter Healy will be giving us one of those huge checks.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes, so that's exciting. And of course, we had asked the Women's Club, would they like to come the same night, but, so they're going to do it in February, so that'll be nice, but it's really exciting. So, we've gotten a notice today that I guess BID Milton will do their own publicity as far as that part of it, but it's pretty exciting that they're supporting.
In total, that's almost $10,000 of grants.
It is. Well, and see, originally, we had asked the Milton Women's Club for $10,000, but because they only felt that they could support the part that was under the Milton Board of Health, the hospital stepped up, so it's really exciting, the partnerships.
Wonderful, thank you.
Did we actually vote both of these? I know we made the motions and seconded. Did they vote it?
Yeah, that one was. Did we vote the BID one?
No, I think you won.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, so, any further discussion, seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 14 is approval of change in Shade Tree Advisory Committee? Oh, change in the charge, okay.
Yep, so I'll propose a motion to increase the number of members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee from five to seven.
I'll second it. I know there's been some, we have four new, we have three already appointed, we have four additional members. There's been some indication there may be one or two members, one or two people who may also be interested in serving.
Yeah.
Should we, if they should submit volunteer forms, we want to appoint them, should we consider it the size then, or should we consider making it a little bit larger than seven?
Again, I'm not in favor of huge committees, but...
I'm not generally either, but there's been a lot of interest.
There has been a lot of interest.
A lot of the people who are on it are retired, and, you know, sometimes people are away in the winter months.
And it seems like a lot of the people that, you know, at least I've read through their applications, are very experienced and passionate about...
They are, they are.
Wanting to help. So, I mean, it's tough to say no to someone who really wants to give their time and help.
Yeah, I guess we could reconsider it, revise the charge again to fix the number.
I mean, I think seven's reasonable, but...
It is, it is.
Okay. All right, so any further discussion, seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 15 is board and committee appointments, Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Okay, I'll propose a motion to appoint Nancy Chisholm of 129 Gulliver Street, Carol Stalker of 291 Hillside Street, Jean Powers of 1372 Brushhill Road, and Peggy Chow of 690 Brook Road to the Shade Advisory, Tree Advisory Committee to serve through November 2016.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion, seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Now, we're waiting on... On the contingent, non-contingent?
No, we're waiting on the number 10, the entertainment license.
Yes, so 16 and 10, we're waiting.
We're waiting, yes. I can't believe how quickly you've...
Time flies when you're having a good time.
I guess.
Sure we'll make it up at a future meeting.
Yes, I'm sure we will.
Sure we will.
We can go through 17, 18, and 19 if you want, while we're... So, Town Administrator's report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to speak about the, we do have the annual town meeting warrant closing on January 14th, so I just wanted to have a brief discussion. I was not, I did not attend your September 1st meeting, I was out of town, and I know you did discuss at that meeting some potential articles for the Maytown meeting, and I just wanted to go over those with you now to make sure that those are in fact the articles that you intend to have included in the Maytown meeting. So, the articles that you discussed on September 1st were funding the DPW yard renovations.
Yeah.
And I don't know where we are with that.
I'm still going to get a hold of Stan, but just to see if there is anything that we can do separate on that, but I will make sure I get to do that this week.
Okay, so we do want to move forward with an article to fund...
If there is anything we can do separately, that's not a lot of money.
Okay. Then the other items that you discussed were a bylaw regulating start times for construction projects in town, and then with Katie and Joe Prandak, we're going to be working on something for that. Is that something that we're still looking at moving forward with, or?
I know Joe is planning to do a little bit of research and to see what other towns' practices are. Yeah, we should, I can, I'm happy to talk to him and follow up unless...
I can do it tomorrow.
You want to do that?
Yeah, I can do it tomorrow.
I think we also talked about maybe asking Town Council what their experience has been with any other towns having a bylaw to that effect.
Yeah, other towns must have bylaws similar to that.
Correct. Then a bylaw regulating special events in the town. I think this was, your discussion on this was as a result of the Thayer Nursery Holiday Fair?
Yes.
I think I suggested that one, but that really grew out of the discussion that the Board of Appeals had.
Yes.
They talked about the fact that their approval of that holiday fair was only for this past December, and that maybe there would be an opportunity for a town meeting article to consider something more permanent, but I think that really involves talking to the Planning Board and maybe even the Chair of the Board of Appeals as to whether that's something we should be thinking about putting forward or not at this time.
Okay, so that's not ready?
I mean, I think it does make sense. Yeah, you're right, I mean, is it a zoning, or is it a zoning by law, or is it a...
We'll have to have more conversation with them.
I think so.
I think that needs more research.
That might be more of an October issue.
Okay. We did the establishment of a stormwater enterprise fund. You had discussions on September...
I think a lot depends on what happens as we go through the process.
So, do you want to meet to draft one, and we can always pull it if...
Wasn't it on now for, oh, no.
It's on to, the February, yeah, to stormwater utility.
So, to, yeah, to allow us to establish a stormwater utility. And once we go there, I guess the choice is, you can either just let the revenue come into the general fund the same way that rubbish stickers do, the only problem is then is just general fund revenue, it's not dedicated to stormwater per se. You could set up a special revenue fund, similar to what we've, what we used to do with water and sewer prior to establishing the enterprise fund. The question I have there, and I haven't received an answer to, do we need town meeting approval to establish a special revenue fund? I know we do to establish a enterprise fund, because essentially the same, I mean, there's really very, very little difference between the two. And the third is just a full-blown enterprise fund.
Okay, and then there was, lastly, there was an email from Alex Whiteside regarding directing advice to the FAA and NASport regarding airplane traffic over Milton. I think that one needs a little more research as well.
I don't think they're pursuing that. I think the Planning Board, Alex talked at the Planning Board meeting about that, but I don't think they're looking to put it forward. That was really more leading up to the February, to the December meeting with the FAA, so I think that might be moot at this point.
Okay.
We could check in with Alex, but I, the sense I got from the Planning Board was that that was not something that they were pursuing. They might have, they might even have just been talking about writing a letter to the FAA to support our November letter to the FAA. Can we come back to the construction one for a minute? I think even if more time is needed to do the research, that's probably an article that could be written just to see if the town should create a bylaw that would regulate construction noise, and then there could be some further time as we go through the recommendation, plus through the Warren Committee of coming up with what we think the times would be and finish the research.
That's a better idea, yeah.
Sure.
Is that the end of your list, Anne Marie? Because I have one other one that I...
Well, that was all that I had from watching that September 1st meeting.
I would like to see us resubmit the, the same article, well, not resubmit, it was, it was, there was a small appropriation last year, but to submit an article again this year for an appropriation from free cash to the Affordable Housing Trust, if there's a contingent budget. We're, in a non-contingent budget scenario, there's no way that, I don't think that would get funded, but if there is a contingent budget, we do have free cash available, that might be something that we should...
Do another small...
Or, yeah, or large, depending on what the other competing claims are for the free cash.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, that clarifies.
Okay. Anything else on that?
That's it.
Okay. Chair's report, Sunday night was the opening of, the kickoff of Novara Restaurant, and I just didn't, you had a previous...
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend.
Katie and myself were there, and the restaurant's beautiful. I think it's going to do wonderfully, it's going to be a great addition to East Milton. The belly parking was a little tough, but there were also about 500 people showing up at the same time, so it was...
Wow, it was quite a turnout.
They had a wonderful turnout, yes. See, other than that, I think you're aware that DCR offered us an additional one-year permit to...
An extension, a one-year extension until April 2017.
Which, you know, very grateful for, because at this point, we, you know, haven't made much progress with the state on the 25-year lease.
This is for the skating rink.
This is for the skating rink, yes. So, I think our committee has done a lot of good work on the 25-year lease, but it's just trying to get DCR and DCAM to get the ball rolling, and for whatever reason, some reluctance there. I've talked to Curry, because if we're going to take it on a one-year, we have to know that we have, A, a rent manager, and B, that no town funds are going to have to be committed to the process, so. They're supposed to get back, Curry's supposed, they are interested, and they're supposed to get back to us this week with a yea or nay, and hopefully it'll be a yea, and then we'll go forward. Member reports?
I don't have anything, other than the plate opened, so I want to congratulate them as well.
Another response.
I got a phone call saying it was bustling at lunchtime today, so that's great.
You'll have to get over there.
Yeah, I bet it's great.
It is good to see both of them come online, and after a lot of work by the owners, but also various town boards to bring in some more dining establishments and businesses.
It'll keep more people around that area, better for the businesses, and, you know, hopefully more people shop local.
The only thing I have to report is just last night, at Alex Whiteside's request, I joined him at the Warren Committee meeting to talk to the Warren Committee about the Henry's article, the zoning article. Alex gave most of the presentations since they're, he's the one who drafted the zoning, but I don't think they voted. We left after our presentation, they were still meeting, but I think they were taking it up for a vote a subsequent night. Well, and the Planning Board's having their public hearing tonight, so I'm sure they defer to vote.
And it's really just to get the zoning to conform with what has been discussed in terms of...
Yes.
The new plan for the mixed use.
There were a lot of questions, so it was a good discussion.
Okay. Let's see, we had Vicki for Citizen Speak, but not any responses to Citizen Speak?
Nope.
Okay. Future agenda items?
We want to put your financial policies on your January 19th meeting.
Absolutely, I think that's important.
What is the meeting for the 12 looking like right now? Is it, are we starting with the stormwater at the beginning, or how is...
Yes.
Okay.
At 7, right at 7 is the stormwater.
Yeah.
And you think that's about an hour to an hour and a half?
About an hour, hour and a half, is what Mr. Cook told us.
Okay. We're trying to get them to come in and do a dry run of it, just to, just to some of the, you know, just to make sure we kind of know how it's going to flow and everything, and kind of know the timing. So, hopefully this Friday, Thursday or Friday, I guess they can come in.
Has it been advertised, so that the members, or town meeting members, or members of the general public might come to the meeting?
I believe Barbara Martin in your office has done extensive advertising, and she's put it out to the nonprofits in town, she's informed them, she, I believe, put it in the Milton Times, it's on the website. She...
That's great, I hope we get a good turnout.
Yeah, it's important.
Yeah. Yeah, once we have the discussion with the non-contingent budget, you get a better idea of what the, you know, taking that $500,000 or $600,000...
What it can mean.
Out of that, what it could mean to that, that non-contingent budget certainly.
Absolutely.
Okay. We're going to have a bunch of dead air if we don't think we have to talk about.
We could take a recess.
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea.
Yeah.
So...
We could take a 10-minute recess.
Yeah.
And Marion should be here about 8.
Okay, good. Okay. So moved.
Why don't we do...
Back on. Okay, back on. So, we're going to skip back up to, where was it?
Item 10, Mr. Chairman.
Item 10, okay, which is approval of an entertainment license for Abbey Park in Novara, and, yeah, Mary McGetrick here to discuss that.
Thank you.
So, Mary, why don't you explain, I mean, obviously I know what an entertainment license is, but, you know, what kind of entertainment they plan on having, and...
Well, it's a little bit of miscommunication perhaps here. We hadn't originally intended to apply for an entertainment license for Novara at this point in time, because usually an entertainment license is for live music, let's say, you know, jazz ensemble or something like that.
Yeah.
And so, this restaurant, which is brand-new, hasn't even had its first official opening to regular customers, was not planning on applying for that type of entertainment license at this time. We'd have to wait and see how things worked out. So, but at the end of December, when Vance was contacted and asked if he wanted to, he just said yes. So, just, you know, like, oh, yeah, sure, you know. So, what I did was I wrote a follow-up letter of application explaining to you that, this is a signed letter for your file, and then, did you get a copy of this? You did, okay. So, what I'm explaining is, we're not actually applying for an entertainment license that exceeds anything that's already limited by our regular permit. So, we're not applying for a license to do live entertainment.
Okay, that was my question.
We're not applying for a license to exceed any sound, reasonable sound limitations. Those are already written into the Vittler's license, and if we wanted to have that type of entertainment, we would have to come back to you for an amended or new Vittler's license.
Yes.
So, it wouldn't just be the entertainment license. So, it would be fine if you want to grant an entertainment license within the parameters of our existing licensing, and if that presents a problem for you, then we would just come back. So, I think, as far as Abbey Park is concerned, that is a continuation of an existing entertainment license, and they do have permission, I believe, for live entertainment.
Abbey Parks, I thought Abbey Parks had the same, no live music.
No live music on theirs too?
In the common Vittler's license, there should be no live entertainment. We had this, remember we had this discussion during the Novara hearing on the liquor license? Because the Novara conditions for the common Vic license were based on the Abbey Park ones.
Yes.
And the Abbey Park says the same thing, there should be no live entertainment.
Yeah, they married it.
And it still says that?
Yes.
Yes, but it looks like there's a separate entertainment license for Abbey Park.
So, what's happened perhaps is that no one has gone back and looked at the Vittler's license. The applicant didn't, and perhaps the board didn't as well.
Right.
And so, you granted the entertainment license, and I don't have it in front of me, but I thought theirs allowed something like a jazz ensemble, live entertainment, but I may be wrong, because they vary. The entertainment licenses vary for each restaurant, and I may have it here, so I'll double-check, but in any case, it's possible too that they're not consistent, in which case Abbey Park should come back and ask for an amendment, amendment to their Vittler's license, which is your local license, so that it will be consistent.
See, what I was wondering, Marion, and you probably know this better, is are they separate licenses, so that having the no live entertainment language in the common Vic license wouldn't prohibit a separate entertainment license? That's, that's what I was asking the Town Administrator earlier today, when I had that same question. Well, if it's not permitted under the common Vic, how can we issue the license? But in the Abbey Park cases, that's the question, is it because it's a separate license that the language can stay that way in the common Vic license?
They've always been treated as two separate licenses. There's always been a common Vic Vittler's license and then an entertainment license, and there's a separate charge for both.
I would think it'd want the two to be consistent. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. You'd have one saying no live entertainment, and then issuing a license for live entertainment.
I know.
Right, I agree.
I know, but that's the only thing I could think of to understand why there would be one for Abbey Park if the, maybe it is just that no one ever checked the common Vic language.
And certainly to have a, you know, do a jazz brunch is not a problem, it's a great idea, but we really should, if we're going to grant the license, I think amend the common Vic license.
I agree.
If you're asking for my opinion, my opinion would be that the licenses should be consistent with each other, and if it's happened by oversight that they're not, the board could on its own initiative amend the common Vic license, or if you prefer to ask the applicant, Abbey Park, to request that amendment, you could also do that. I'm not here officially representing Abbey Park, I'm here for Novara, but...
I suppose we could approve these pending amendment to the...
Amendments to the common Vic Vittler's license.
And then just put it on the agenda for the next...
How is it written on our agenda? Is it that narrow? I wonder if we could do it tonight?
The agenda mentions the common Vic license.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, it's just entertainment, okay.
So, we could approve the entertainment licenses pending...
Subject to amendment of the common Vic Vittler's license.
Down on for the 12, because that only took a couple seconds, I think, too.
Yeah, that makes sense. Is that, I know you're not here tonight for Abbey Park, but is that really what their entertainment license is for? It's just for jazz brunches and the DJ entertainment that Vance mentioned in his letter?
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay.
That's what they've asked for in the past, and I've looked, I have reviewed their license, I just don't have it in front of me, because I was thinking about this when we prepared to file all the applications for this restaurant, and I did some research on entertainment licenses, because I thought it might be a state license, and although there are some state licenses, they're not really anything like the entertainment license that the town grants. It looks like it's just a local license, there isn't a special form for it, you just use a license form or no form or a letter, so it's something that the board has discretion over, and, well, you know, my recommendation would be that the board should try to make sure that what they grant as an entertainment license is consistent with what they've allowed in their other licensing.
Yeah, this draft says public entertainment license. It has a restriction in here, too. The level of sound will not increase from the present level, and there will be no amplification of the music being proposed.
Which is, I mean, that's a little bit of, you know, I mean, you can have one guy with a guitar and a little amplifier, and technically that's amplified music, but you wouldn't consider it, you know, being obnoxious or anything.
I'm not sure where this language might have originated, but...
Well, I think it was Vance's language, and I think the problem is that amplification can create a much louder sound that would be heard out in the street and throughout the business district, or in a neighborhood, if the restaurant's in a neighborhood.
But you might be better off controlling that with just, you know, rather than amplification, you know, not so loud that it can be heard outside the restaurant, or something to that effect.
Well, no sound amplification exceeding regular sound, with your current sound levels, whatever it says in the current license, is it...
And obviously, they're a restaurant, so they're not going to have loud, loud music anyways, I mean, it's...
Level of sound will not increase from the present level. Level of sound will not increase from the present level, there will be no amplification of the music being proposed. You know, I don't know what Vance said, maybe he said, I'm only gonna have someone come in who's.
Right. I mean, if you, you know, you have a piano player that has a microphone, and, I mean, technically that's amplification, I mean, you know, it's.
Well, they do mention DJ entertainment as well, and I know they've had that, but.
And that's amplification.
Right. And, but, you know, sure, it hasn't impacted anyone, but still.
Yeah, there's probably a better way to word this, but.
Right.
If this was.
This could also be amended, you know, you could either say, the problem is you're into the new year and you, you know, they don't have a license right now unless it's renewed, but you, you could renew it and say that you're going to consider further the language, or you could wait, whatever you feel comfortable with. And as far as the new requests, same problem, you have to consider how to make, make sure that it's consistent.
Just with the common vic jeweler's license.
Either change the Vittler's license or, for the time being, grant it as, as it's already limited.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem with that if you want to do it.
Yeah, I'm, so I'll make a motion to approve an entertainment license subject to an amendment of the common vic jeweler's license for jazz brunches and DJ entertainment for Abbey Park at 550 Adams Street and Novara at 556B Adams Street.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Uh, do, do we want to friendly amend that to, and also subject to, um, certain restrictions on the entertainment license or something that, or, I don't even know how you'd word that, but, to deal with the amplification problem? Or, or just deal with it later? I guess we can deal with it later.
Question, I think we, I think when we make that amendment, we can articulate it in that amendment, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, do we get a second on that, or?
Yes.
Okay, motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Your names.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Unless you have any other questions about the new restaurant, which hasn't quite opened yet.
I know, I was looking forward to trying.
They had an overly successful, um, open house, I think.
That had to be the biggest open house.
They had more friends and family than they realized. And, uh, the restaurant actually will be much quieter and smaller looking when it's in operation than it was at night, but it is an interesting space.
Yeah.
Tom just gave an update on it, and, uh, yeah. It was, it was a great event.
Yeah. The only, the only little concern I have is, is the valet. I mean, the valet, obviously that wasn't a good test of the valet because you had hundreds of people, you know, and, and it's not gonna be like that. But, but it occurred to me that most people would come to the restaurant, if you come from Milton, you're probably going to be coming, I guess that's northbound on Adams Street, or, you know, you're gonna be coming towards Quincy, and to get to the valet, you really got to make an illegal U-turn on Adams Street, or you're gonna have to go through the neighborhoods and back up and around, which could present a problem.
And that, you know, it has been brought up as an issue. So far, the police department didn't want to switch it and put it over on the other side of the street, but, you know, you did see at least a, a rather, a high-level test of it because there were so many people there at that open house. But, um, I would say the thing to do is to continue to look at it as the restaurant actually opens and its normal.
Yeah.
Population. And, if you feel that way, I, I don't think that there's any preference on the part of the restaurant as to where the valet parking is. They just think that it might be good to have a valet parking.
I think it is, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
And I think the idea is that it's to be, you know, also used by Abbey Park, so anywhere along there, on the other side of the street, if that works. I think they have, have they yet designated a truck parking area for large truck deliveries across the street?
That's across the street, yes.
So, that's not used during the evening hours though, is it? So maybe that could serve, maybe both could, maybe that could be dual-purpose.
No idea, yeah.
So, it's something that, you know, you have to talk to the police department about, and they need to.
I guess just kind of watch it becomes an issue.
Yeah, work the.
But I, I think it's a good point, and I think people can cross the street reasonably easily, there, you know, it's, it's night, but it's also a quieter time for traffic.
Right, right.
These things, I think, should be worked out in the first few, after a week or two or even more.
Right.
But if you need anything, if I need to do anything, let me know, and.
Okay.
You're gonna go back to the police department and you want someone to speak on behalf of the restaurant, you just need to let us know.
Mm-hmm, okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still way ahead of schedule. We've done the entire agenda.
Should we take another recess?
Uh, yeah, we've got 20. Here's Ted. We got two of the four.
Maybe a five-minute and.
Yeah.
Where we stand.
Are you up to number 16?
We are.
We're there.
Yes, yes. So we're just waiting for Marion.
Mike Zulis.
Mike. Uh, yeah, so why don't we take another brief rest, recess, huh, like five minutes?
All right. You're up.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. We are here to present our recommendations for balancing the fiscal '17 non-contingent budget. This PowerPoint was prepared by myself and your town accountant, Amy Dexter. I'd just like to walk you through our methodology for preparing this non-contingent budget. We requested all departments submit a non-contingent budget to include salary and wage that was maintaining current staff levels, so no new positions, no increase in overtime or seasonal appropriations, but including contractual increases such as steps, lanes, and longevity. For general expenses, we looked at contractual obligations at an amount equal to that specified in a contract, other general expenditures not to exceed fiscal '16 appropriation, and new equipment for the police and fire not to exceed fiscal '16 appropriation. So I'm going to turn it over at this point to your town accountant to talk about how we arrived at the fiscal '17 revenue numbers at this point in time.
Good evening. Um, on the non-contingent revenue budget methodology that was used, the first item I'd like to talk about is the property taxes. Property taxes are the town's major source of revenue, accounting for approximately 80% of the general fund revenues. Property taxes are projected to increase 2.5% annually as allowed under Proposition 2.5. The new growth that is being used for the FY '17 budget is projected to be $500,000 for FY '17. This figure was obtained from the chief appraiser. This is somewhat above historic levels. In FY '16, it was budgeted to be originally $375,000. The actual for FY six, FY '15, it was budgeted, FY '16, it was budgeted for $375,000 when we went and prepared the tax recap last November timeframe. The actual had come in at $736,000, and looking forward, he and the board of assessors gave us the figure of $500,000 for FY '17. The second largest source of general fund revenues comes from state and local aid. It approximates 11% of the general fund revenues. State and local aid is not, um, it's kind of tricky at this point in the year because the governor's budget doesn't come out until the end of January. So at this point in time, we don't have any visibility into whether or not the state aid will go up or be decreased, so we have kept that to remain level with the FY '16 amount.
We do know there's still, still a possibility of 9C cuts in FY '16, right?
Yes.
Although we don't know if those are gonna affect the aid at all, even if there are, but, you know, if, if there are 9C cuts in '16, you can, you can bet that '17 is probably gonna be a tight year.
Right. So at this point in time, our best guess is to keep it, to remain, remain level at 9.9 million, which is consistent with FY '16. The last piece of the revenue budget comes from other local receipts and other financing sources. We looked at the different categories that fall under this subtotal, and we looked at actual historical revenues for FY '11 through FY '15. We looked at three-year averages, five-year averages, and we also looked at the five-month stub period for FY '16 that ends November 30th of 2015, to see if that would indicate any additional trends that we could factor in. We did submit original estimates to the warrant committee back earlier, like September, October timeframe. We have tweaked those numbers a little bit based upon what we've seen happening in the first five months of November. And the total of those sources are estimated to be approximately, where's that number? 8.3 million for FY '17, an increase of 639,000. The main, um, revenue sources on that line item accounting for the $600,000 increase is motor vehicle excise taxes, penalties and interests, licenses and permits, and prescription drug reimbursements. The last piece of the revenue I'd like to talk about is other available funds. These are, um, things that, such as the overlay reserve, we kept that consistent with FY '16. That's based on a historical average. The, um, largest piece that you'll see on this slide that decreases the last item in that sprat, fresh, free cash used for operations, the figure here, if you recall, free cash used in the FY '16 budget was 2,009,81,240. And this number here represents only those items that were operating, items that were funded with free cash. So just keep in mind that there were additional items such as capital, things that were non-recurring in nature that aren't included in here, so that we are comparing apples with apples. Otherwise, um, it wouldn't be an accurate comparison for the dollar change column. And this one item that we are showing is free cash used for operations for the FY '17 non-contingent budget, those are items that have been included in the non-contingent requests by departments that we have identified as one-time, non-recurring. They're mainly sick leave buyback and some funds to, um, go towards legal for airplane So overall, um, the revenues are only projected to increase 2.4% total, and that's mainly because of the property taxes.
So I want to just outline our methodology used for balancing the non-contingent budget. The FY '17 non-contingent budget request exceeded the FY '17 revenue estimate, resulting in a deficit of approximately 1.4 million. The approach we used to balance the fiscal '17 non-contingent budget was to use the fiscal '16 town meeting appropriation, less any one-time items included in this appropriation funded with free cash as the starting base for '17. The fiscal '17 starting base was adjusted to account for increases in contractual budgets such as retirement, general insurance, the Blue Hills Regional Assessment, and law. In addition, the base was increased to include an estimate for steps, lanes, and COLAs wage adjustments, and into, and to include the FY '17 one-time items included in the operating request recommended to be funded with free cash. After that procedure that we, I just outlined above, the deficit, and there's, there's a correction here to the original PowerPoint that we gave out, that the deficit number was $105,172. That was remaining. This resulted in the need for additional cuts to non-contingent requests. This methodology resulted in the need for the town and the school department to absorb general expenditure contractual increases and unfunded federal and state mandates. This will have a significant impact on most departments, resulting in cuts to staffing levels and general expenses. These cuts will have a detrimental effect on the ability of departments to provide the current level of service to the town of Milton residents. So now I want to walk you through a spreadsheet that we created that outlines the methodology that we just talked about above. If you look at this spreadsheet, the first column is your fiscal '16 appropriation as voted by town meeting. What we did in the second column is we backed out all of the one-time items that were not gonna reoccur, and other items that were transferred in from fiscal '15 budgets. So we backed all of those out, and that gave us our starting base for fiscal '17. That's the third column. The next column represents the steps, the lanes, and the COLAs. We added those in on the town and the school side. Then our next column is, is our recommendation for one-time, non-recurring items included in the non-contingent budget requests. And those, again, as Amy had said earlier, are your sick leave buybacks and airplane noise mitigation monies.
So we're anticipating all the other free cash will be used for one-time items?
That's right.
And, some of those haven't, you really don't need that discussion for purposes of this, the result would be the same, it's.
That's correct. Yeah. We were just charged with balancing the non-contingent budget at this point. So then the next column, if you direct your attention down to the bottom half of that, these are what we consider the non-controllable budgets, and so we had to adjust the basis to the fiscal '17 requested number, because again, they're non-controllable, these, we have to pay these, these costs. And then the, the column, that same column in the top half of it is what was the cut resulting after we built up the budget with the, adding the COLAs back in and bringing the non-controllable budgets to the fiscal '17 number.
Can I just add one thing? So, that column for the, the town and school added together equals the 105 that Emery previously referred to on the other slide, that was what our deficit was after we made these adjustments that we spread between the town and the school.
So that, then the next column is your balanced non-contingent budget. Then your next column is the fiscal '17 departmental requests, which showed that there's an approximate $1.4 million deficit. And then our recommendation to balance the budget was to cut the townside departments by $456,077, and, I'm sorry, $496,225, and the school side by $885,266. And, that is our recommendation to balance the budget, and it is approximately a 2% reduction to both the town and to the school side. Again, as we stated previously, the fiscal '17 non-contingent budget request exceeded the fiscal '17 revenue estimates, resulting in a deficit of approximately 1.4 million. This result, this will result in significant, and I can't stress that word enough, significant cuts to staffing levels and reductions in general expense in most of all of your departments. These cuts will have a detrimental impact on the ability of departments to provide the level of service provided today to the town of Milton residents.
You know, it's, it's obvious looking at it, you know, at least from the town side, that, and, we're looking if, on a non-contingent budget of 456,000. Well, I guess first, we should say a couple things. First of all, these are preliminary revenue numbers, so they're gonna change.
This is the snapshot at this point in time. As Amy said earlier, we don't even have the governor's budget yet, we don't get that till we go to the MMA conference, the end of January, House One hasn't come out. So, there, there's gonna be some changes here, but, you know, we were tasked with balancing a non-contingent budget, and so this was our recommendation of the way to do that. This ultimately will not be the end result, I'm sure.
So, you know, if, if this were the budget we had to go in with on, on the town side, we're cutting for, almost $500,000 in that budget. Um, we've only got $2.4 million worth of non-salary expenses in that budget, so it's obvious that a good chunk of that reduction is going to be wage.
Staffing levels, yes. Staffing levels, yes.
Staffing levels, meaning layoffs. And we specifically didn't show the breakout of all of the individual town departments because you still haven't gone over those individual cuts.
No, I would, we had planned, Amy and I had planned on sitting down with department heads to go over the cuts to the individual departments, but due to the holiday schedule, a lot of departments were on vacation, so we don't want to go in depth to what the cut result is to each department until we've had time to sit down with the department heads.
That being said, without going into the numbers too deeply, because of the arbitration with the fire department, the fire department probably has the biggest issue in terms of its budget trying to, and trying to deal with this noncontingent budget.
Yes.
And the fire department is, I mean, you cut one person from the fire department, and you're looking at at least roll enclosures of fire stations. I mean, they're that tightly manned right now.
Right.
So it could be very problematic for keeping three fire stations open. You know, other than that, the only thing, other thing I want to mention about this is, you know, we are talking about a stormwater utility included in the DPW budget in this noncontingent. It's a little more than a half million dollars of stormwater, stormwater costs. So if we were to remove 500,000 from the DPW budget, put that into a separate utility, that's going to, you know, go quite a ways towards helping both the school and the, and the town side in terms of dealing with the 1.4 million. It will cut that 1.4 million down to.
That's correct.
By five, you know, a little over 500,000.
That's correct.
Down from that. So it'll make it more like eight or nine, but still a, still a big number, but certainly not as bad.
Mm-hmm.
And otherwise, wait, attempt questions, or?
While we have the school representatives here, we want to give them an opportunity. If they want to say anything at this point regarding the noncontingent budget, maybe they don't, but if they do.
Sure. I'll take a couple minutes if you have it.
Sure.
Amy, we can sit down.
So thank you all for inviting us in tonight. What I'd like to do is just very briefly kind of set the context from the perspective of the schools, and in some respects, from my own perspective, because over the last six years, I was on the warrant committee, and this is my third year on the school committee, so I can speak personally to some of the impacts of these cuts and what it would have on schools. Over the past six years, as you all know, this community has supported the schools very well, and before that. To borrow a convention that's used in other venues, I can report to you that as we sit here tonight, the state of the Milton Public Schools is very good. To cite a few examples, this school's district is a high-performing organization that is competitive with its peers. Our educators, administrators, facilities, security, and technology are to be envied by those peer districts. Our French immersion and English innovation pathways have broad appeal and offer unique opportunities for our young students. The breadth and depth of our academic and extracurricular offerings have expanded. Our assessments and test scores are increasing, show increasing achievement by our students. This is highlighted most recently by the attainment of Level One status by the Milton High School, as judged by the state, Colley Cotts maintaining its Level One status, and the rest of our schools maintaining their Level Two status. And finally, invigorated by new leadership, our special education programs and our athletic programs are unquestionably on the rise. However, with all that is being achieved, it needs to be said that because of financial constraints, on no occasion in the last six years, and perhaps beyond that, has this district received the level of funding that the school administration and the school committee believed was necessary to allow them to fully achieve their mission. Hard choices have been required, and hard choices have been made. Over the last three years, the advancement initiatives have allocated resources into three critical areas: early literacy, narrowing proficiency gaps, and science and STEM. Those initiatives have shown early promise and will continue to show success as they take hold. But cuts have been required, and initiatives have been installed in other areas. For example, art, music, physical education, and health in our elementary schools are limited to 30 minutes a week, which by any reasonable measure is woefully inadequate. Library at the elementary level is limited to once every two weeks. We are down one history teacher at the middle school, which has compromised the highly successful team teaching model. We are down an administrator at the middle school as well, which has compromised discipline and supervision. We do not have a 13-year public education program in this district that includes tuition-free full-day kindergarten, which puts us in a distinct minority in this state. Our athletic fees are too high. My guess is among the highest. Our bus fees are too high. Again, my guess is among the highest. Each one of these cuts installed initiatives in isolation and in light of the financial constraints over the last few years has been defensible. However, the cumulative effect of these cuts installed initiatives over the last several years is, to paraphrase a town meeting member from last May, troubling. And I believe that to continue with these cumulative cuts installed initiatives and to cut further would begin a degradation of the Milton Public Schools that would take years to reverse. Now Miltonians over the last 20 years, those who've sat in your seats and those who've sat on the school committee and school community leaders and parents and others who've supported the schools, have bequeathed to us a public school district that we are proud of. It's envied by its peers, it attracts families to Milton, and it keeps them here, and most importantly, it provides a top-quality education for our children. It is now up to us. It is up to us to give value to what has been given to us. It is up to us to continue to provide a top-quality education for our children and to improve our schools for the future, for those who come after us. I fully expect that we'll be up to that challenge. Now, just briefly, in response to the numbers that were laid out by the town administrator and the town accountant, this noncontingent budget has a reduction to the bare-bones school budget of about $885,000. I'm not sure where those cuts will come, but the average teacher salary is $55,000. So if we have to make those cuts in staff, which is likely, that's 16 teachers. That's not how to improve our school system. That's not how to continue the value of our school system, and that's not how to, how to continue to provide a top-quality education for our students. Everyone who knows, who has children in the elementary schools knows that class sizes are already high. Class sizes should be between 18 and 23. In some classes, they're up in 26 and 27. Class sizes are too high at the high school. This would exacerbate that problem. So it is a sobering outlook for the schools, and I hope that we all have the will to do something about it. So that's, that's my soapbox.
Well, I mean, clearly, if we have to go with a noncontingent budget, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough year. It really will be. You know, and that's not just the school side, that's the town side too.
That's right.
I mean, 450, almost $500,000 cut out of the town's budget is enormous.
Yes, I agree.
It's enormous. That means that there are going to be public safety departments that will not function. So.
And even, Tom, if you, if the stormwater utility comes off and we get an extra 250K, you're still talking about 600,000. So you're still, you're still talking about 11 or 12 teachers.
Yep.
Right? So that may be, that's a little better, but it's not much better.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, so, you know, in any scenario, this, this is a budget that obviously we don't want to see happen. You know, we haven't started, you know, Ann Marie and Amy are going to start to work on the.
Contingent budget.
Contingent budget, and we should have something within a couple of weeks on that.
That's correct.
And part of it's got to come from us, because we're the, we're the body that puts the override number on the ballot. And it's going to be a very precarious position to be in. And we know that first pass, it's almost 6 million, 5?
We did load all the fiscal 17 contingent budget requests, and it's approximately 5 million deficit.
About 5 million. I can tell you right now, we're not going to have a $5 million override.
I would point out along those lines, Tom, that, you know, Ted's here, and we presented our, our initial contingent view to the warrant committee, and, you know, Ted viewed it as restrained, and I think it was, very restrained. And so we'll see how that hashes out with the warrant committee, but I think we're doing all we can to, to try to keep that number as low as possible, but I hope that doesn't, I hope the fact that we're trying to be as restrained as possible doesn't redound to our detriment, and that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the obvious, and it's not necessarily, it's really not as much a spending problem as it is a revenue problem, but clearly, you know, when you only have 2% increase in revenue in a year, and historically, that's about what we have. In a good year, maybe we have 2 and 1/2. You know, I guess the more our revenue, because every year that other revenue sources are flat and real estate taxes go up by 2 and 1/2%, more of our revenue is real estate tax and less is the rest of the stuff. Eventually, I guess if you spread that out, we will be 2 and 1/2% pretty much, because the real estate tax is going to be 90% of the revenue. You know, if you, if you just project it out long enough.
Yep.
But that's all we have, is 2 and 1/2% revenue growth, you know, without an override. And, and we know that we have, you know, justifiably so, but expenditures that far exceed that. You know, just a fact of life, I guess. I mean, we've got to start at least thinking outside the box in terms of, you know, A, you know, are there any new sources of revenue under the sun, but B, is there any way, and we've been trying to do it to consolidate, to look at ways that are innovative in terms of.
We need to look at more efficiencies within departments still, and ask our department heads to do.
Right.
A little bit more with less, and try to find new and innovative ways to be more creative.
And that's town and school alike.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, there's got to be a better way to do it. And I, I don't profess to know what that is, but there's, there's got to be a better way to do it.
But we should mention also, it's been now, what?
It's been a while.
Last operating override was in 2009, right, for the fiscal 10 budget? Is that right?
That's correct.
Right.
So we're really looking at.
And all we've been doing since then is just basically covering raises on the town side and doing nothing else. I mean, we've added very little.
We've been cutting away at general expenses on the town side in order to do the level dollar budgets.
Right. We've had a couple of reorgs that have freed up some money.
That have freed up some money. We've tried to be creative with our reorganizations.
But it will be really seven years between the.
Yeah.
The 10 and the 17 overrides, because we know we're going to be putting forward a contingent budget to town meeting. So that's a long period of time, longer than, at least in recent memory, we have gone.
That's true. It's been more four years.
Having an operating override before the voters.
Yeah, it's probably been an average of four or so years prior to that for, during the mid-'90s to.
So that's, so that's a factor as well, that, that it's been quite a few years. We've had some years with large amounts of free cash, but again, that's one-time monies that.
Right.
There's no guarantee that it'll be there the following year, even though the last couple of years, we've had some consistently high numbers. That's, there are various reasons for that, sometimes because there were vacant positions in departments, sometimes because revenue estimates were.
Yep.
A little bit low compared to what actually came in, but there's only so much that we can. Some years, we've had negative free cash. Some years, we've had very little free cash. So there's really no way to.
To judge it.
Anticipate that that's going to always be there.
No, I mean, a lot of our free cash is because of unfilled, I mean, you know, some of it's extra revenue, you know, the revenue that kind of falls out of the trees, but a lot of it's also departmental givebacks because of positions that haven't been filled, you know.
There were a half a million, a half a million on the town side of givebacks for departments that had staffing changes and reorgs.
Right.
So the half a million of that free cash number was for departmental turnbacks.
Right. And we've been lucky that we've had, you know, past couple of years, a decent real estate growth. There've been a lot of, you know, people tearing down houses and rebuilding houses and that kind of thing. There's been a lot of development in town, so new growth has been up and, you know, over what it's been in past years, and, you know, building permits and those kinds of fees have been up, and those have helped. But, but yeah, still, there's no, free cash is never a guarantee, and you hold your breath and, you know, take a look at what it is in, you know, late October, early November, and, you know, either pleasantly surprised or disappointed, either way. But yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
Can we talk a little bit more about the process? Because this has been a different approach this year. Normally, the budgets all get submitted to the warrant committee, and we've got the warrant committee to figure everything out. We've got the.
Yeah, Ted, you want to come up?
Immediate pass, chair of the warrant committee.
Thank you, Michael.
But, so we're following a little bit of a different process because we're transitioning to the new Strong Town Administrator, and one of the duties, once that legislation passes, will be for the town administrator to be presenting operating and capital budgets. So this is a transition year. What, are you, Ann Marie, anticipating going in and after you've come back here with a contingent recommendation, then presenting both of these budgets to the full warrant committee? Is that the process that you're expecting to follow?
Yes, if the board.
A balanced spreadsheet.
Yes, a balanced, a contingent number for an override and a balanced noncontingent budget that the board is comfortable with me recommending, yes.
And that will have some input. I mean, obviously, the contingent budget, like the noncontingent budget will have input from the school department, from the other departments.
All the department heads, that's correct. That's why we're not ready with that number yet.
Okay.
Cut.
Hi. I just want to mention briefly that as of yesterday, I'm the secretary of the warrant committee.
That's true.
And Lee Michael McLean is the chair for the balance of this term. Lee Michael's unable to be here tonight. I'll speak for the warrant committee. The process, the budget process this year is certainly different than it was two years ago. Last year, we began working, I think, more cooperatively and less independently than we had two, three, four, or five years ago, and that was really welcome. This year, we have, I, you know, certainly want to continue that, and we have the added impetus of having passed the Strong Town Administrator article last spring, which requires the Strong Town Administrator to submit a budget. That hasn't quite passed yet, but Ann Marie is grappling with what will become her official duty at some point. So I want to thank, you know, Ann Marie and Amy for putting this together at this early stage in January. And, you know, it's a nice job of aggregating the issues and showing how big the problem is. And so I think that's great. The warrant committee numbers are really not much different. There's, you know, I thank you for finding $151,000 in local revenue in the last two weeks, Amy. That's great. But, but, you know, our numbers really aren't much different, and even if, well, anyway, in terms of the process, this is good. The warrant committee is going to go forward and investigate all the departmental budgets, including the schools, and see where, where, where things stand with each department. And we'll be, you know, we'll be looking at any recommendation that comes from the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, and ultimately, we'll have our own recommendation. It may, it may dovetail very closely to anything that comes from this office. We may have differences. I hope, I hope we discuss those, and I can't imagine they'll be too wide.
The thing we would like to do, Ted, is, is deal with one spreadsheet.
Right.
Dealing with, with a, you know, a selectman or a town administrator and a town accountant spreadsheet and, you know, warrant committees, and spending hours trying to reconcile them all the time is just a bad use of everybody's time.
Oh, it is. No question about it, and that was addressed this fall.
That's right.
The town accountant devised a wonderful new spreadsheet that mirrors the warrant, so it's, it will expedite production of the warrant as well as, as keeping us on the same page. So we are.
Great.
Yes, and we had, we met with Ted, and we got his buy-in on the. Yes, and we had, we met with Ted, and we got his buy-in on the changes that we made. And we have shared that spreadsheet with Ted.
No, it makes a lot, makes a lot of sense...
Yeah.
...to be, so we are working from the same format.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not exactly the same numbers as, you know, we have reason to change something and then share it with Amy, and Amy might have reason to change something and then share it with us. But we are on the same format, which will be, which will make life much better than years past.
Yeah, I'd love to see it come to be an interactive, you know, so that you're just dealing with one...
Sure.
...one document rather than...
Sure.
But that is good.
Anyway, so that is a major step.
Good.
Warrant committee chair.
And I think that will lead to great efficiencies when we're dealing with the budgets.
Great.
So as far as the process going forward, yeah, it's complicated. We have, we have obviously the non-contingent budget to work out. And clearly, we will appreciate, the warrant committee will appreciate having the Board of Selectmen and the town administrators' input on where those cuts amongst the different town departments might come. Just as if there was a possibility of an increase in funding, we'd want to know who we...
Yes.
...what else you might want to increase.
Yeah. I mean, behind this spreadsheet you're seeing here, there obviously is a detailed spreadsheet that will roll out, that will be, you know, detailed department by department. And, you know, once we've had a chance to vet it with all the department heads...
Right.
...we'll have specific cuts in specific departments.
Right. And frankly, you know, this is about a 2% cut...
Yep.
...in order to achieve a balanced non-contingent budget. And the department heads weren't asked in advance for a specific cut scenario. For one, for one reason for that is we were already asking them for two normal budgets. We were asking them for a regular, bare-bones, contractually-based budget, and then a needs-based budget, you know, for what they thought their department would need...
Right.
...in order to ensure the continued delivery of, you know, services to the town. So we were asking them for two numbers already, and we, I guess, failed to ask them for a 2% cut number, which might have been difficult to predict how much of a cut that would have been. But they are, we're all going to have to face that.
Yeah, and to be perfectly honest, at least on the town side, you know, it's probably a better discussion with the town administrator and the department head to really kind of get them to think and focus as opposed to, too often what happens with these budget requests, because, you know, department heads are obviously as busy as all, you know, all of us and crazy and everything else, and probably don't always spend the amount of critical thought time that they should put in the budget together and thinking about where cuts can be and what they might look like and what the impact is. I think that, you know, the town administrator, the town accountant, together with the department head, kind of doing some critical thinking can make those cuts. You know, it at least make them, well, they'll never be palatable, but at least some thought process into the cuts and...
Well, you're absolutely right. They are far from palatable. Over the years, over the years since Proposition 2 and 1/2 was and became the law of the land and the state continued funding us less and less, we've gone through the cycle of having an operational override and just sort of coming even, you know, breaking the surface and taking a big breath of air and going, okay, we're all right. And then spending the next several years until perhaps the next override, holding the bandwagon together with bubble gum and string.
Right.
And as we cut a little more here, cut a little more there, find an efficiency here, find an efficiency there, charge more fees for one thing or the other, and, you know, really, it's a horrible way of doing business. It's demoralizing for the working staff of, you know, or the, you know, policemen, firemen, librarians, teachers, for sure. And it's unfortunate. Ideally, there would be, I mean, if you have 2 and 1/2% increase in revenue from taxes and maybe a little bit from, you know, growth in new income, so maybe you have 3%, well, it's tough if you have a budget that asks for a 6% increase. And actually, that is, I mean, even though I think the school's budget is pretty reasonable, and especially the contingent piece is super restrained, they still are constrained by their labor contracts and their whole, and their budget is going up 6% from, if you back out the one-time money. And that's difficult to do. And, I mean, it's almost impossible to do year after year after year in a 3% revenue environment. So it really comes down to, you know, the residents and the taxpayers of the town recognizing, you know, the need to step up and pass an override.
Yeah. But, yeah, the problem with it, though, like you say, you know, if the spending increases are, you know, 4, 5, or 6% a year and the revenue, you get the override, you come back to par, and then for the next four years, you're cutting until you can't cut anymore, and then you back, you know, I mean, it's just a stupid way to...
Right. So when, so when...
To run any business.
I mean, when Mike was mentioning, you know, even if we have, even if we change the stormwater division of the DPW into a utility fund, and we are able to restore $508,000 to the budget, he's still looking at 11, 12 teachers. And what he didn't mention is that, well, what about the two teachers from last year and the two teachers from the year before? You know, I mean, these are cumulative.
And never mind all the other, you know, library only being once every two weeks.
Library, in this scenario, right.
Physical education only being, you know, 30 minutes. And, you know, so we're not really even meeting a lot of the needs that we want to meet to be at the highest level.
Right. Part of the need for an override is to restore the cuts that have been made little by little in the intervening years since the last override. And we've had, we've had a lot of that. So that's why, that's why even though this number says 1.4, an override for 1.4 would be insufficient, because you really want to restore the cuts from the previous years as well. And once in a while, it's nice to make a little progress, too, you know?
Yep. I mean, you obviously, I deal with the reality of, you know, I think we all agree that we do need an override. You're always dealing with the reality of, is some override better than no override? Because clearly, if the number is $5 million or what you think you really need, it's a number that you're going to put out in the street and very, very likely will not get. And it's an all or none, you know? So it's not like they're going to say, oh, well, we won't approve five, but here's three for you. You know, it's just going to be, it's either five or none, or three or none, or three and a half or none. You know, so you're always dealing with that, obviously. So it's critical in terms of what that number is going to be, what's going to be, you know, what can the voters live with? And, you know...
And then showing the voters the need.
I think also articulating the strategic planning moving forward for the next five years on how we're going to be more efficient, regionalized, and collaborate as a school and town, so that we can try to raise some of those opportunities within, within the structure that we have.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Anyway, I want to thank you for putting this together, and obviously, we'll be...
It was a collective effort.
Following up on it. Anything else for the warrant committee at the moment?
Thanks, Ted.
We're wrestling with the special town meeting articles.
Yes. Yeah, started as one and now, what is it, five or...
Four.
They're four.
Yeah.
They're four. And we're looking forward to the presentation on the stormwater utility on the 12th.
The 12th.
Because as soon as we listen to that, then the printers want the warrant on the 12th, too. Same old story.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we break this up, I did have, and maybe it's a question for Glenn or Mike, I'm not sure which, but all-day kindergarten, free kindergarten, which I think makes an awful lot of sense, especially in a contingent budget, you know, to be able to do that. Can you explain to me, Glenn, you know, and I've heard that, you know, about 90%, we've got a, one year, it's kind of back-end funded, so that in FY '18, we'll get Chapter 70 money that will basically cover about 90% or so of the FY '17 cost. And what confuses me is typically, your Chapter 70 money is based on a foundation budget. Milton gets about 17% of foundation budget. So how is it that we get 90% of all-day kindergarten?
What you're getting, it's actually, it's actually far worse than that. There's two different computations involved. One is the foundation budget, and one is the town's perceived ability to pay, which is a completely fictitious computation...
Yes.
...involving things like the average, the median income of the town, which of course has nothing to do with the amount of money you can raise in property taxes or anything like that. And Chapter 70 becomes the difference between the two of them. So the foundation budget is a complicated formula that takes into effect how many kindergarteners you have, how many elementary school students you have, how many middle school students, high school students. And they have formulas for saying an elementary student, a kindergarten student should be so many dollars. And how many teachers you have, and a teacher should be so many dollars. And how many square foot of building you have, so that's so many dollars. And it's this large computation of what they think it should be to run your school system. What happens here is when you charge tuition for kindergarteners, half-day kindergarten is required by the state. So when you charge tuition, your kindergarteners count as half a student. When you don't charge tuition, it counts as a whole student. So what happens for us if we don't charge tuition is 340 children move from half-status to whole-status. And so that part of the computation grows, the foundation budget part of it. The town's ability to pay is only marginally affected by that, because that's not part of that computation.
Right.
And so the difference between the two of them is basically the difference in the foundation budget. There's a little bit of hold harmless, and there's this business of trying to get to 17, you know, trying to get to 17% in the minimum contribution and stuff. So the other part of the computation does change a bit, but the major change in the computation is adding what amounts to 170 students, because 340-ish students move from full to half-time, for half to full-time.
So that's going to increase the foundation budget by a number?
It's about $1,000,001, all right? Because it's a hundred...
And we get approximately 17% of that?
And what will happen, what will happen is the other part, the town's ability to pay, because of their formulas that go towards a certain percentage of your expected contribution will change a little bit as well. So we won't get the full $1,000,001. That goes, the town's ability to pay goes up by a bit.
So you make up for 17...
150 to 200,000. And so we get the difference between the two of those, because Chapter 70 is just the difference between those two numbers. People think that Chapter 70 is based on so many dollars per student. It really isn't.
Right.
It's the difference of these two computations, one of which is based, in a way, on so many dollars per student, and one of which is a completely different computation based on the, you know, demographics of the community. So it's an interesting computation that the marginal cost of adding these kids is actually better than the average cost in the aggregate of, that we get from the students. Because if you think about, you know, we, well, the amount of money we get per student from the state, you know, people think, oh, you're getting so much per student. You're actually not. And so these new students will actually generate more money per student than the current students we have, just because of the vagaries of this formula.
Okay. And you feel that 90% number is, you know, I mean, if it's not a cost of $800...
Well, I mean, it's, the million one is, what I did is I took this year's formula and said, what would have happened if our students were, if we weren't charging tuition and our students were full-time? And the one part went up by $1,000,001, and the other part goes up by 150 to 200,000. So the difference is sort of a $900,000 difference. And these are all approximate, because every year, the legislature tweaks them a little bit. They say, well, how much? You know, we have always been one of the communities that didn't get the minimum allowance. We were always under minimum allowance. And so there were these formulas that sort of tried to creep you up to minimum. So that has some effect. That gets changed year to year.
It's supposed to take, and I threw out the 17% number, you're really not taking 17%.
No.
You're taking the foundation budget minus another number and...
When you look at one number, it looks like 17%, but it, that's not how they come up with it. It's not like they assign every community a percentage and say, well, you get this percent, and you get that percent, and you get that percent. That's sort of a, you know, a derived number. It's backed into from 3,000 other computations.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Interesting.
No, it's not. I know far too much about this budget.
All right. Any other questions on that?
No.
No.
Okay. That's great. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, or? If nobody else has any comments or... Good job. Thank you.
Well, I want to publicly thank Amy Dexter, your town accountant. She did a great job with the spreadsheet. She's a master at spreadsheets. Her little hands go so quick on those spreadsheets. I really, she put a lot of work into this. I really want to thank her.
Okay. Right. So I think we're at that time now where I'm going to propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel, non-union personnel, believing they have in such a discussion open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating and negotiating position of the board. Return to open session for purposes of adjournment.
Second.
Okay. And seconded, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Charlie, yes? So we are in executive session.